We need the minutes. You need to, you got something on the agenda that you need to get out or?
Um, I think they were talking about the room in between Jennifer's office and our office that upstairs was gonna come down and share with us.
Well, what I understand on that is, what Jennifer told me, she would be willing to give that south wall if she wants to put locking file cabinets along that south wall. And you could stack them too high if you need the space, but that, that's it. No doors, no, no locking doors. You gotta leave it still open for the fire, for the fire reasons, give you multiple accesses. But she was willing to allow, like, file cabinets like that with locks on them. She would be willing to let them go along that south wall from one end over to the other with file cabinets if she wants, but that's, that's, that's it.
I'm thinking for auditor reasons, for coming in and out of, for into the treasurer's office with multiple people accessing our office, we're gonna have to get a locked door on there. Like, because all the people coming in and out of our office with the money that we have in there and access to our office.
Well, I think that locking that door makes a fire hazard code issue, so that may not be, that may not be such a suitable spot for file cabinets then.
I mean, I know they need this, they need more access for their file cabinet, you know, to more room, but, I mean, we're gonna need-
Maybe we need to go back upstairs and look around up there.
I mean, I'm just saying, we're gonna need a, a door also, you know, for the people that come in and out of our office, especially right there.
Well, maybe we better look around before we decide to make any decisions on this.
Yeah, I don't mind if they put it in there, but I'm just saying, with more people coming in and out of our, having access to our office, I'm just saying that we're probably gonna need something.
Well, I think we probably ought to stop and look at our options before we do anything.
Okay, I, I mean, that's just my opinion.
Okay, very good.
I've moved over into her side, and we are completely done recreating books, so now as soon as I can just make connections with the salt mines, we'll be out of her side. And so you might tell her, "Give us a minute." I mean, they shut it down where nobody could go up there with COVID.
And I don't know why upstairs, there's, you know, back behind the courtroom, there's that kinda little room that's got a table like this.
Well, the lockers in the back, I mean-
And then there's, there's, I don't know why if they're locking file cabinets, there's gotta be some room up there that we can utilize. And to me, having it up there closer to her would be much more feasible for her than running up and down the stairs.
I said, I, I apologize, I have, I have went over onto her side, but I did ask for permission before I did.
That's, that's okay.
But I will get those books and move to the salt mines.
And I never thought about coming and talking to you guys, 'cause I just talked to Jennifer, and she said, "Well, we really don't use this space." She said, "I'm not opposed to giving it up," but she said, "We can't have any of the locked doors because we pass back and forth through there between the assessor and the treasurer." And she said, "There's also, as the fire marshal had talked about, you need the two access," which we talked about that on the phone the other day.
He's throwing me out the window.
I'm throwing her out the window. I'm gonna give her a small rope.
It's 85 years old. You know, it's great everywhere, but it's okay.
But anyway, uh, let's, let's look around, let's, don't be hasty and make any decisions. Let's just take this for now.
I maybe we take no action right now.
That's all I was needing, especially with multiple people going in and out of our office.
I think, I think that's the way to go.
I know about the fire marshal issue before, we'd have to cut another door into the hallway to make it accessible for the fire code, and I don't think that's what you want to do.
I don't think so either, especially with your stem wall you got and your plexiglass, it, it's just not workable. Uh, I apologize for not stopping and talking to you guys, I never even crossed my mind.
That's fine.
So, y'all ever need anything like that, be sure to reach out to us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry, that's all I was needing.
Thank you.
What is your name?
Don't ever-
And you're in which office?
Treasurer's.
Okay, thank you, Don.
Okay, let's go back up here and pick up the minutes.
Now, I've taken over a lot of the, but I asked, I don't need that, like, a whole lot of files or something.
Yeah, I was in there this morning looking at it, and of course, if you, if you moved all those wooden shelves on the north wall, you could put some-
Well, I think she had-
That would be a tremendous amount of storage if you went too high on the south wall.
Well, I think she told Valerie she could use those cubbies on that north wall, so I think that's what Valerie was gonna, she didn't mention that, but-
Well, I figure, being court record, it had to be locked, I would think, so. That's why I was leaning towards the locking file cabinet, so by she had keys, nobody could be in there proud.
Well, they ordered all those locking file cabinets when Lori was here that, that looked just like mine that are in there in the mapping room. Um, she ordered, I think there's three in there, and she ordered three also, but I think they moved those upstairs, but we could order some more.
I think if she could use them upstairs, it'd be so much more handy for her.
I said, I have moved, I mean, I have taken over the mapping room in there, but as soon as they give us okay that we can bring all those books up, and we just finished the last book last week recreating those, so, I'm gonna, all those books down in the, in the basement also, I'm just gonna take all of those to the salt mines and store those there.
Now, there's two rooms, when you go upstairs to the bathrooms, there's two rooms on the east side that are like just little rooms that has tables and chairs and stuff. I don't even know why they couldn't use one wall of them, 'cause if they're locking-
The locking file cabinet.
Locking file cabinet, I think that would be so much closer to handier to, I really, from the get-go, I thought that'd be a better idea than coming down here and invading this space.
Those things are so-
One thing about that little safe that's in there, you're not gonna get it out of there.
Yeah.
There's no doors that you can put her through, it's there.
It's there.
For good.
Yeah, this, um, I've got two of those locking ones, and there was a place, an unit that was going out of business, and they advertised that they had those locking shelves, so I went up and asked Brian Mitchell, I went, "They're selling these for 50 bucks, they're like 400."
Oh, my, yeah.
And I said, "Can I get reimbursed for them and go get them?" And he's like, "Why would I not?" I'm like, "Well, we're just not supposed to reimburse, but as long as I have your blessing, then I can do it." He says, "Yes, go get them." So, I got two of them, I mean, they're just, they're just the, the lateral files, but I mean, if we can watch, you know, and I know down there that office surplus place, they may have some, that new ones are so fucking expensive.
I'm moving, check the minute. I say, the, all favor.
Aye, aye.
Eminem, Wartz, or Payman?
Wartz.
Oh, pile, see, baby pile.
That's why she was hiding that.
Yeah. Luckily, it's not that tall this time.
Didn't want you to think, "Oh, great, we're gonna get out of here at 10:15." Oh, sorry, orange is dropped, oh, I'll take my, I'll, I'm on the bottom. You don't have to, yeah.
Not this one?
Yeah. I think, I don't think there's any in there, I should've called down and told you.
No, it's not.
Um, I think we've done them all taken care of, so.
Oh, you did?
Boots, you'll have some of that, but she's still here for her bid, so.
Yes, okay.
It's okay, I had someone over there that I couldn't get away from, sorry, I'm late.
We got out of order.
That's okay.
They got out of order, I never get out of order.
It was fine, and I liked it, I can keep, good job, Jay.
Can't control when people come in, so I just have to deal with that and do the other one, that's all right.
They're gonna talk to me some more upstairs.
Okay.
I'm done.
Just no action.
Yep, just no action.
Oh, okay.
That's your job, is to figure out if there's lockers or not. It's like a great thing. Marvin gets it always.
He was fine there.
Well, I was down there, I stopped by the house, I had time, and he had been on my mind, so I stopped him down there, and, I say it was a couple months ago, but it was probably six months ago, and he was doing good at that time, but he did not get up.
Rear view.
Well, that's the name was-
We know what that is.
He, uh, he did not get up, and you know, that's really unusual for him not to stand up, you know, and greet you when you come in.
Yeah.
They both, they're both still, but I just mean-
I didn't, she was-
I didn't either, I mean, she was really good there, and she had come back so much from, I mean, she had been sick there a couple years ago. I was just totally shocked, I drove through Helena, and I text Latoya, I went, "Did you not tell me something happened to Phil Vic?" And she's like, "Oh, 'cause there's a bunch of cars there." And she's like, "Okay, I won't tell you, but I don't know what's going on." I'll tell you that, but I don't, and then she called me the next day, and I'm like, "Oh."
District two has all the utilities.
I think you have two. I suppose.
Does Jay need to sign this general government?
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to ask you on this one, I, even though I didn't sign it.
Yeah, it's on, yeah, both of you can sign it.
I'll leave to you. Your pen is getting a little thin there.
Did they finish the deal up?
I think we moved one way or another, Jay.
No, I understood they moved, now they had to come back and do one more thing on the toilet, and I think that is, I think I'll let him.
At least the way they recovered, they won the, we almost lost. I'm moving, check damage.
I second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Blankets.
Blankets from the sheriff's office and from district two, I don't know if you've ever signed. Yes, we've already done a, we've taken, it took no action, I don't think I can talk to you. Y'all know what you were talking about.
That's a two-way street.
I, I was gone, I didn't even know it was on the agenda until just now.
Sorry. I'm moving, if you get the time, it's okay.
All favor?
Aye.
I tried to give him the her, sorry, seeing the blonde hair and the black clothes, oh, she's like, "What am I supposed to do?"
Appropriation.
I was, I'm gonna come to you in a few months, unless it's how it gets actually, you cut the comments. I was grandma, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Can one or some of you guys come upstairs when you guys-
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a toll card that I believe must have, I told her all, so I'm just gonna put those books, if she needs, all of them down here, and I'll give her her half back.
Good. Hey, right on.
You made that one into a two, really easy.
Black ink, go right over top on it. Seems like Jay always hits lucky.
Yeah, right.
Mm-hmm. Marvin the morning got her, like, he hung that throat, he was crazy. Take that back, y'all did too, man.
He's reminded that I told Jay, so, let's see, he must really like you deep down.
I'd remind this one, you put it on the agenda.
Get it out there.
I maybe we accept the appropriations.
All favor?
Aye.
Lucky offer, report, report Kurt, records made.
We have the sheriff, and we have mine, and, and it says, Sheriff's Officer of Mine.
All right, there, one chief.
One chief.
I don't know what's going on.
We have to send multiple in, so you're going to copy some more.
I'm moving, check the money off here.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Likely highway expenditures.
I'm moving, wait something, I'd like to-
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Allocation of alcohol, I just wanna be looking for.
Did I say that his wife passed away? Jay?
You what?
Did Harold Bick's wife pass away?
No, I did not.
Last week, they had her funeral, last Monday, other than two weeks ago.
I haven't heard.
Her funeral was last Monday, the woman in nursing home was just having problems with pollen and stuff, so, yeah, that was a hard decision for the family.
He sure wouldn't, he'd argue about this again.
Yes, he would.
He did every time.
Good guy.
You people down there just starting to drink a little more, and that way you get more tax, eh? I'm moving, accept alcohol.
Second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Road crossing permit.
No.
To your alibi again, so am I.
Always.
Private, private property access, even if for different trees, to remove trees from the right-of-way place.
There's two clocks in the same room.
You wanna say about that?
Nope. You just wanna pile the trees, huh?
That's a big plus, is you can plant black powder.
Well, I'll make a motion to accept the, the cop deusement.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Open bid, award bid for construction of a new bridge located on Lambert Blacktop.
No bids for some others?
Well, I'll open this gentleman's first. Lindsay's up there grinning and smiling.
I actually got it turned in this time.
Good, good, I appreciate that. You do not have to wait till last minute, I know I told you that last time. Thank you for turning a bid in, I would appreciate that.
Technique welding.
145815?
Mm-hmm. Get signed, certified.
Kremlin welding, $98,018. Was there any, uh, on this, was there anything like a hammer hoe or anything that's used unforeseen in this bid or anything like that?
Unforeseen, what do you mean?
Uh, I know, I think that Rick had talked about, something about needing a hammer hoe for unforeseen use, when I put down there at the bottom, I guess there's nothing unforeseen part of destruction of the bridge.
This looks like a bunch of rock, I mean, mountain water table.
Okay, okay.
RRY Services LLC, steel water, 144450.
Well, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept Kremlin Welding's bid at $98,018.
I'll second that.
Congratulations, sir, you have yourself a bridge.
Man, that's your bridge, I'll, we'll second it.
Okay.
He does have a, a bid, a bond in there, doesn't he? I didn't ask if it's not, since it's been over.
You do have a bond.
Well, that's your deal, and that's good.
Yeah, as long as he has his, 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 yeah, all right.
All right, there you go, congratulations.
Being Lois' bid.
Yes, Lois' bid.
It's not lost bid, Lois.
Thank you, sir. Now, we get to have more than working with you.
Resolution designating official board members to CEDA- Resolution designating official board members to CEDA for January one through December twenty-two. I'm going to leave Marvin on. He's going to kill me. Because he said, "You get me on that board."
Do me a favor and call him when you leave here and tell him. Just tell him. I mean, that's what we did.
Oh my. Are you for sure going to do it?
No.
Oh, okay, I'm running out.
I really don't think so. I mean...
He doesn't want it?
He don't want it.
Well, you're in.
I'm sorry.
I'm on the notice board. That's enough of me. But you call him, Kelly.
And then hang up.
Before he starts using that, using that, bro.
We need to call him back.
We need a second person and a third person.
The what?
We need a second person and a third person. We need a first alternate and a second alternate.
Okay, the second alternate would be... Who's the... There's a second and a third. Jay, Marvin's in there first right now. You're second and I'm third.
I don't care. Put me down.
Second, you're second, and then Marvin third.
Yeah.
That gets him...
That way we took care of the boys.
Yes, yes.
You know.
Down here, I'd be taking advantage of this deal.
I already had wrote that. Oh, he's not going to be happy. He just... I know he forgot that was on the agenda.
I pretty well done knew that I was going to get nominated for this. Second. Jay nominated, I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution approving interlocal cooperative agreement for CEDA number eight in January to December.
And see, I thought we had done, talked about this. We didn't see you either.
No, we did the engineering. We slightly engineered it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you were gone, so that's why I brought that in there and had to re-burger scan it and said, "Just make sure this is what we need to do."
I'm going to accept the resolution.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Transportation of juveniles for security pension facility log for July two thousand twenty-one and August two thousand twenty-one.
This is actually money coming to us.
Oh, well.
We want to pass the...
That was my question.
I know.
Because we've read that many a time.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes, you know, sometimes it's... Or you want to... Yeah, I just feel that's on the same line. I try to take up space because I didn't want to go into the second page. I ended up going on the second page anyway. So, yeah, this is actually the log of us transporting other juveniles, so we want to send this.
Just one commissary's second?
Yes, yes.
I'll make a motion to accept the law.
All in favor?
Aye. How's your turn?
Declaration of surplus. Let me set serve for two thousand twelve Traverse. Zero number seven seven. We need violation number seven seven.
We are looking to purchase a vehicle with better ground clearance for traveling some of the lease roads and, you know, visual inspection. So if we surplus this Traverse, it opens us up to allow it for a trade-in later on.
Did you look at your model? Is it an S L T? Do you want to change it?
It's just an L T.
Okay, so I'm going to mark that too. Like, we didn't have anything on ours, so I didn't put it on the agenda, so...
Oh. I'll make a motion to accept it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Kind of crook to go out on a beach for the accessory for a two thousand twenty or newer pickup truck with or without trade-in of the Traverse, and I assume that's a four-wheel drive, right?
Okay, so here's some of the pictures, the roads that we travel. I have more, but that's why I printed out today. Those are... Most of them are driveways.
Those are different two.
I know. That's a driveway. That is a half-mile-long driveway.
They're Marvin's road.
They are not Marvin's.
That's pretty red dirt.
Yeah, yeah.
That is a driveway, but... So, the ground clearance on the Traverse never made it.
I can understand it needing a four-wheel drive.
No, it wasn't. It should have never been.
No, so the specs that I have written up are for, at minimum, a six-cylinder pickup, automatic gas, four-wheel drive, less than twenty thousand miles. There's a couple of dealers that have some things on the lot that said, "Well, we would like you to consider," and I said, "Okay." Used, so I put twenty-twenty or newer, four-passenger, four doors. We do carry some equipment, maps, measuring tapes, things like that, and looking into even carrying more equipment. I need some legroom in the back. I don't need a terribly big bed. Maximum length of the truck. Maximum or minimum clearance, I need eight inches minimum. The Traverse has seven-point-two inch clearance.
One thing I would advise you on it, just when you're looking, the V eights now have a... They shut down two cil... or two to four cylinders at times, so they... When you're at highway speed, they go into a four-cylinder mode anyway. So that... Sometimes that six-cylinder, I know you're thinking fuel economy, but sometimes that six-cylinder interstate speeds will use more fuel than a V eight will when they go into shutdown mode. And the V eights super more common, easier to find. I would honestly lean to a V eight. And you'll have more truck than you need it.
Well, I just, that's why I put up a bid. There's four different... The dealerships that I've called cannot match state bids because if we go with the state bid, I have to order the truck, and then we're looking at nine months to a year before they can make it. So, the ones that I've had to go with, they've said that they have things coming that meet these types of specs that they will give us a bid on. I'm looking at bid to include a possible trade-in. If they won't give me enough trade-in value for the car, then we'll look at doing something else, whether we sell it at auction or we just open bids specifically just for the car.
Resale on automobiles have started, used automobiles are starting to rise because of the computer chip issues, so... So you should actually have some really decent resale.
We need to sign the...
Yes.
Any word?
Yes, anywhere else. That's just the main one going out. That's the...
And I did do this as a bid as a lease purchase, so we would not be extended beyond one year. We could always turn the vehicle back. Of course, that's not really my intention for a lease purchase, but I know that... Lydia has helped me a lot with this, guys. I will say that. She's helped me a lot to understand what I need to do with purchasing because the assessor's office really just doesn't purchase a lot of big-ticket items. So she's helped me through this whole process, and I appreciate that.
I'll make... You need a motion on this. I'll make the motion to accept.
Actual.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. About kind of estimates that need a financial statement, I'm going to take no action.
No, 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 we have, remember.
Well, I thought you said that's the one.
I did, but then I looked at my email. Remember, we have the publication, so, yes.
Same thing.
We have it, we have it.
I withdraw that no action.
This is the publication. This is not the actual
Right.
complete, you know, bound budget, but it is the publication, so we can go ahead and get the two weeks started for these ladies, so, yeah. So, as soon as I get that publication Wednesday or Thursday, I will run them on down to the city, so our two weeks will get started.
I have to wait that before we can roll over to the treasurer. The treasurer has to have time to mail out. Stuff, envelope, mail out.
This new process of them having to send those estimate needs to the state has just been horrible. I'm betting he has just pulled his hair out, pulled his hair out. And he tried. He said to apologize to you guys. He tried everything to try to actually have it ready. But he is going out of town tomorrow and he said... Do not come... No, he didn't say that. He said, "Call him if we have any questions on this, if we have any concerns on this, but this is the publication to get it in the paper." Then Exhibit Y is there for the X I four, signed alarm.
Correct on it, so that's all that matters.
I make a motion that we accept and tell him thank you very much for his services.
I'll second that. All in favor? Dating a local agreement for disaster, forty-five eighty-seven severe winter storm.
And I'm assuming this was this February severe winter storm?
It's already, I think it's already...
It's already happened. They had to be in the...
It was the February eight.
Ice storm.
This was that February ice storm?
Yeah.
This is just the interlocal agreement.
Just one signature.
I have not, I haven't seen it, so...
And then she'll take it in.
Which if you want to, we're signing underneath.
Not one? What she needs, she didn't say anything other than...
It's just a common interlocal agreement.
It's down there, and then when you get down, I think you need to get it back to Daniel.
There's just one right here, right?
I'm going to accept it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
We already got the storage room deal. In a way of unforeseen business, just for everybody. FYI, we did sign contracts on graders too deep. All three district. Well, we signed it as a commitment, it's not a contract. Because as of Wednesday, we could not order any more graders, and as of Friday, they went up twenty-five thousand dollars per grader.
Signed commitments?
Yes.
It was just to lock the price.
To lock the price in, so we didn't have to pay the twenty-five thousand dollars more grader that took place Friday. Seven for me.
Seven for me.
Yeah.
Same amount.
We're dropping one grader.
We're dropping one grader too. District Two is dropping one.
How much did you say was going up?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand dollars per grader.
We had a three-day notice.
Yeah.
It's due to the strike that John Deere's on strike.
I see that on the news.
Well, we are paying for their strike.
And we probably, it's going to be, I don't know whether we're going to get a June or July delivery, it may be October again.
It's going to be this year, yeah, a year out.
Probably before we get a delivery date, but...
And that's saying they come off strike.
But after Wednesday, we couldn't even order.
This morning I read that they came, they came to an agreement.
Have they? I didn't know that.
Well, they got graders to build, that's why.
Well, and a tractor, for us.
I'm going to agree.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.